Please bow your head and let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for all that you've blessed us with, and thank you for life itself and our health. Tonight we pray healing for those who are ill, and we thank you for the relationships that we have. Thank you for giving us each individual gifts of service that we are able to use for useful work, and for the honor and responsibilities you have given us for our community. Today we ask you for your wisdom and guidance to best serve our community. We ask for special protection and blessings for the people and families in our community, and we hope to glorify you in everything that we do. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Be careful driving home, watch for deer. Do you, did you get your stuff out of the other room? You was outside?
Yeah.
Very good.
Do you want to work on the bill list? We gave it to you first. Sorry. Changed it up a little.
Blessing you. Hi Jamie.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Do you need a pen tonight?
No.
Do you need a pen tonight?
Yeah.
I have some.
I'll take notes and pencil.
Yeah. You can use a pen again. I'm with you on that.
Okay.
It is. Somebody's bowling upstairs. Rumble stills getting. So I will call the meeting to order. Let's begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Library of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Devin, if you would proceed with the roll call, please. Randy Coffey, Mike Canna, Mindy Galbely here, Larry Lambert.
Here.
Bob Porter, Steve Wallace.
Here.
Mayor Stammen.
Here.
All of the council members, Bob Porter and Randy Coffey. They did both let me know earlier, Bob, a few days ago, and Randy this afternoon that they were ill. Next on our agenda is to have approval of the agenda.
I move that the agenda be adopted as printed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as printed. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now we need reading and approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, which was October 21st.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the October 21st, 2021 regular meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mike and seconded by Larry, as he indicated regarding the minutes from the October 21st meeting. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And now we come to pre-approved reports and presentations, and we have Jamie Crowley here, who is our district library director. Jamie?
Hi there.
Hi.
Since there are several new members on the board, I just thought I would visit. John and I have been working together to come up with some plans to upgrade the interior of the library. We've been actually working on this for a few years now. There was a possible building purchase across from the library that fell through for various We have a large amount of money in a fund that was left to us or gifted to us by a couple, the O'berries, who lived in Perry. And we would like to start offering certain services, materials, and programs with that money, but we really need the inside of the building upgraded in order to do that. So what we're hoping for is, the library board has agreed to pay for interior work to be done on the library. John has brought in several contractors, but we finally figured out exactly how, you know, we wanted the interior set up, so we finally were able to compare apples to apples with different contractors. And my board looked at all three proposals for the interior and agreed to purchase or to go with John Cody, who is a contractor, he's a local contractor, if the board would, if the city would look over and possibly pay for the exterior renovations. So we don't own the building, but to move this process along, we would like for you to consider that, to kind of partner with us in that. Again, we don't own the building, so you would have to approve work to be done on the interior, but we were hoping that then you would look at and hopefully fund the exterior so that we could do it all at the same time with the same contractor. And we are hoping to start that project in the spring so that we can be reopened for summer reading. So I have some information, I have some, we did hire an architect, a YI back, and I do have like an interior rendering if you would like to look at it, of what the library could look at. We have since done some changes. John came up with some really good suggestions to actually improve the back part of the libraries, and that would make it more handicapped accessible, which is what we've been talking about. But, you're welcome. And I don't know if everybody has been in the library, has visited the library, but if you haven't, I think in a way you're welcome. Everybody to stop in, and either Carol or Christine will be working, you're welcome, and give you a tour. The building is pretty in rough shape, especially in the back, so we really need this upgrade in order to add any type of new furniture. The walls are not flush with each other, so we can't really, we can't just purchase a bunch of new furniture and just, and expect everything to look decent when it's done. And the Lotus Two.
Thank you.
You're welcome. On the side of the building, so right here is where the fire department is, and then we have a door that opens up into the alley right there. That's in our children's area right now, which right now is a safety concern and has been for a long time. So there's quite a bit of work that needs to be done, and Mr. Cody's expecting it to take about two months to do. So in order to get him scheduled, and he actually ordered library furniture with the shipping and issues, I'm not sure if that would even come in time if all of this ends up going through. But anyway, so let me tell you the, I don't know if John was going to present the different estimates, but we ended up going with the least expensive contractor for both. We had him separate the bids out. So, so as far as the interior, which would be paid for by CDL for John Cody, it was, he quoted us for $39,430. For the exterior, he quoted, which is what I'm hoping Perry City would look at funding is $24,000. Another estimate by Jay Rahala Construction, the exterior was quoted for $28,210, so it was $4,000 more than Mr. Cody. And then the interior, he quoted us for $42,630. And then one more other builder with Eric Worm out of Owasso, his exterior bid was for $38,400, and the interior was out of this ballpark, it was $142,780, which I don't even think the building is worth that much. I was pretty shocked, but, you know, I don't expect you to make a decision or anything, but we, in order, I'd just like you to consider it, and then if you have any more questions, I can forward you more information so that you can discuss it. I'm not sure, you know, what you have in your budget, but the trust money that we have is quite significant to spend on programming and library collections, and we could buy furniture and that type of stuff with it. So if you would have a brand-new, beautiful-looking library if we could just get started with this process. For a small town, you know, like Perry, we could make it look really nice, so.
We do have this subject on our agenda under new business. Are you planning to stay with the rest of the meeting?
Yeah.
So we will have discussion, and council will perhaps have questions.
Sure.
Are you at that time?
All right, and then John could probably answer any construction. He's worked very hard on this. He has scheduled contractors in and, you know, listened to opinions, and so I appreciate John's time and effort spent on this, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is public comments. Is there anyone here who would like to do that public comment? If not, we'll move to communications. Devin, you have any communications for us? Devin does not, so we'll move on to mayor and department head reports. I will just highlight a couple things that are coming up and one that already happened. I'd like to give a shout-out to the businesses downtown who put on a fun-filled Halloween event Sunday afternoon from four to six. Several of the businesses had games out on the sidewalks for kids. There were families in costumes, and Amy's Diner was giving out hot dogs, and they had tables set up in the fire hall for people to go in there and carve pumpkins and get other things. I couldn't even keep track of everything that was going on. There was a beautiful mural that sat out by a bale of hay that the kids could sit on for their parents to take their picture, a Halloween mural. So lots of really creative things, and the scarecrows just added to that. And thank you so much to John and the DPW crew who put those up the first of October and took those down Monday. Yes. And one of our scarecrows gave birth to a baby, pumpkin scarecrow, during that time, so that was exciting. And so that's great, for the businesses to come together and do that. Also, we have the Veterans Day Parade coming up, that's November 11th. The parade will be in Corona, and it's at 7:00 PM that day. And there's a number on this flyer, if you would like more information, this is available at City Hall. City Hall will be closed that day, Veterans Day. And the Perry Elementary art class, I believe it was the art class, but a Perry Elementary teacher has had the children create signs to honor the veterans, and they have made sixty, six-zero, not one-six, six-zero signs that will go on those snipe wires. And we are giving them special permission to put those out. They will be at the four corners of the M-52 Lansing Road intersection, and they will be there all week, so they'll go on Monday, come down Friday. And Dory tells me that the four businesses at the corner are very excited to participate in this project and happy to commemorate Veterans Day. I just wanted to let you know too that Dave Lowery wrote the history of Perry and pictures from 1836 to, I forget when. But he wrote one book, and then he expanded on that and wrote a second one. Both of those books are available to purchase here at the City Hall for $5 each. He has donated those to the McQueen House Fund, so any sale of those books, the money will go into the McQueen House Fund. And I think that's everything that I had. So any department head reports? John?
Just real brief. Please pickup is starting. That last frost a couple days ago really brought it on. I just ask that residents place their leaves, not in the driven part of the road, but along the edge and along the brush, and keep the stuff out of the road. If you have catch basins near your house, if we can't get to them and we know there's rain, just please kick them off. We've had a couple near mishap floods from stuff getting overnight, so that's about it.
Okay.
We're just doing public work, stuff.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any other department head reports tonight? I see Glenda, I mean Joey.
Glenda. She calls me Glenda the Goodrich because I bestow upon her wisdom. Okay. Just some information, our tax collection for the city, we're at 94% that we've collected so far. We will continue to collect the summer taxes until March 1st, and then my books will go over to the county. Our winter taxes will come out the first of December, and they'll be collected here at City Hall until February 14th without penalty, and then we'll continue to collect them until the first of March with penalty. Our motor pool grant is closed. We received the money, $10,900, which is for the tractor, the DPW tractor, which is 35% of the total cost. Other points, our OPEB report, which is our other post-employee benefits. This is our legacy cost report that's done by Watkins and Ross, and that is finished, and it's at the auditors, so that information will be included in our audit. They've kind of said that's what they've been waiting for, that's what they've been waiting for, and so it's finally been released and they have it. And so now the only thing that we are waiting on is the year-end adjusting journal entries from the auditors. So other than that, things are going great. Megan's doing a wonderful job.
Thank you. Any committee reports?
Just a quick one.
What I hear. Oh, I'm sorry, yours. I forgot Devin's department. I'm sorry, Devin, did you have a report you wanted to grab?
I don't usually have one, I know.
I'm sorry.
Mine is actually going to be a little off department, but events. The events committee will have a meeting on November 15th, and along with that, the biggest conversation in that meeting will be Christmas fantasy. So I am here to let everybody know that as long as nothing should change in our world, December 11th will be Christmas fantasy, and there is a raffle that is done, and if anybody would like to donate to that raffle, council here, would love to have it. In the past, we've received frozen turkeys, hams, all different shapes and sizes if you would like. Businesses, residents, if you would like to participate in that donation, that is great. The biggest thing that I do know is going on, that's being worked on and collected, is the scavenger hunt, which the mayor and Mindy are working diligently on a lot of that. So I encourage the public to come on the 15th if you'd like to know what's going on.
At 6 o'clock.
At 6 o'clock, the 15th, thank you. And again, if anybody would like to donate to the raffle, it is a free raffle, and you don't have to be present to win, and it is a nice gesture that the city offers to everyone.
They could let Dory or you know if they want to contribute to the raffle grant?
Sure.
Email, phone call, that's whatever. Anything else?
I love my election workers. It was a great day. It was a long day, but we got so much fun.
Great.
Swap recipes.
Very good.
Ate very well.
Ate very well, yes, yes, we did. We're still eating, thank you very much. We're at a ball upstairs.
Have I missed any other department head reports? Now we'll move on to committee reports.
Just quickly, business affairs and technology, just an update, we're continuing to move forward with the website development. We have a prototype version that's basically live that Devin, Dory, Sue, myself are working with Shoemaker Technology Group to fine-tune from our perspective, and then probably the next week we'll have a committee come together. I've now just sent links to you, Mindy, and to Randy, the other committee members, so they can start to look at it and play with it. I'm still optimistic that by Christmas holidays or the end of this year, we'll have a new website up and running, at least based on what I'm seeing right now.
Great. John?
Regards finance and ordinance committee, just a reminder, we're going to work on the proposed revisions to the ORV ordinance. We got sidetracked a little bit with some vacation and other conflicts, but we'll get that back on track for review. We've got a couple of other things on the agenda. Hopefully we'll be reviewed and approved today on a couple of other amendments that we're making to current ordinances, so we're slow but making progress.
Great.
Comments, questions?
Any other committee reports? Okay, we'll move on to presentation and approval of the bills.
I move that we approve the bills as presented and payment be authorized.
Larry moved, Mike seconded, to approve the bills as presented, payment be authorized. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now on to old business. One item there is a discussion regarding whether we need to create a charter commission to review the charter, see if there's any things that need attention, changing, additions, whatevers. So that's our topic of discussion for tonight.
I have a question in that regard. My understanding, we don't need to put together a charter commission actually to necessarily do minor revisions to our charter. We could go forward and review it and bring it forward if there are some, you know, minor modifications to be made.
Correct, Devin? So it's conceivable, I think I want to take more work on for the finance and ordinance
committee, but it sort of is under that umbrella if we were to say that we wanted to have the finance and ordinance committee at some point in time review our current charter and evaluate whether or not it needs any revisions. If they're major, maybe we need to revisit the charter commission. If they're relatively minor, maybe we can handle this minor modification. Just a thought.
The one item that I would like to see us look at is the, the point in the charter that requires the assessor to live within 15 miles of the city. She's very close to that, but she's not 15, I think she's 60. But with today's technology, email, texting, cell phones, you know, computers at home, I think that requirement is outdated. So I would really like to have the ordinance committee look at that and see what their recommendation would be. If you're getting together and you want to look the rest of it over to see, and you find many things that need attention, then maybe we should create a charter commission, but if you're not finding a lot, I don't know, what's everybody think about that?
I haven't seen a lot.
Pardon?
I haven't seen a lot of anything that needs.
I mean either, but that one, I think we talked about the JOPA, if you will, before. We need to take a look at that, so.
I agree. Look at it, need more attention. Make big things.
Let's put it on our next agenda, because it would require ultimately going before the voters, correct, to make the charter change?
Yes, it's quite the process. Your council has to make the resolution. We will need the city attorney for that format, and have to go to the attorney general, and then they'll tell you whether it meets the standards of City Hall rule, and then if they're okay with it, then it goes to the governor's office for signature before it even goes on as a ballot proposal. So it's still a time-consuming thing. The only thing that I had mentioned to the mayor is that I would like to be reviewed respectfully. The last revision, I believe, is dated '88, and there's a revision of, or there's a section that is a $500 limit, otherwise needs authorization. I believe that's outdated, and that specifies that that $500 limit that is allowed by the mayor and administration must be in the budget already before that we would have authorization to approve ourselves. And I believe a consideration of moving up even $1,000 is reasonable without, you know, to be able to get business done and not bog down the agenda, because it's not, we can't do any kind of spending that hasn't been already, you know, our budget reports, that's what we're giving you of what's in the budget. And so that's the only other item that I would like to be talked over. There's a policy that goes with that, so I would give you a copy of that, because I believe they go hand in hand in revisions.
As I always say, over the next couple of months, as the finance and ordinance committee gets together for the other things we're working on, that we begin to look at those two areas but the rest of it, because if there's some other areas, I'd rather, you know, go through, and if it's reasonable, do them as a batch, if you will, as opposed to individual elements over the next year.
Devin, I'm not sure how that has to happen. Do we need a motion from council to ask the ordinance committee to look at that, or can we just say ordinance committee, look at that? How do we need to do that?
Usually a subject like this, you're sending the subject to the committee. You can always make a motion, but you don't need to do this one.
What do you think, Mike? Shall we have the ordinance committee look at?
Yeah, I agree. It sounds like we're starting to have a small enough glitch right now where it's not working.
It sounds like we're starting to have small enough glitches right now where it's not a lot of work. We just a couple of things if we get deeper into it.
Pretty things, Steve.
I agree.
Yeah? Mindy? I know you.
There's been a revision since then, since eighty-eight, hasn't there?
A whole revision, it's dated eighty-eight. Amendments have been done. Yes.
Okay, well then, let's send this topic on to the Finance and Ordnance Committee for review. And when they are finished, they can bring it back and tell us what they found. Moving on then to new business. Our first topic there is possible approval of a retirement package for Joanne Delting, also known as Glenda the Good Witch. Jo was planning to retire February first of 2022. She wanted to get to her anniversary date of January twenty-eighth, which would be thirty-one years in the employ of the city of Perry as treasurer.
Come on, you can do it.
I know.
You can do it. Come on, you can do it.
But Jo's health has been declining, and she needs to retire early. So she would like to retire Monday, November the eighth. So I would like to propose that we look at the possibility of giving Jo the benefits that she would have received upon retirement after her anniversary date, but give her those as of Monday. Discussion on that?
It's a nice gesture after thirty-one years of service. You know, we're talking about two months.
That's exactly what we're on here.
She's earned it, although I have to protest her nickname. I do not think she's a good witch, I think she's a night witch.
A what?
A night witch.
You said you wouldn't bring that up. You said you wouldn't talk about that.
But we can talk about that privately.
Yes, I do have a little Glenda the Good Witch sticker on my computer that the mayor gave me.
Okay, okay.
To christen me up.
I move that we shall approve Jo Delting treasurer thirty years to retire November eighth, 2021, and respectfully pay vacation leave accrual of one hundred and sixty hours without waiting to retire after her January twenty-eighth, 2022 work anniversary to receive this benefit.
We have a motion on the floor, made by Mike and seconded by Steve. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Congratulations, Jo.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
We do need to talk now about our new treasurer, Megan Galbraith, who has now been in the city's employ for, how long, two months?
Two months.
Two months. And Jo tells me that she is doing great. She's been hands-on with Jo, kind of watching over her shoulder, but doing a great job finding things, not afraid to ask questions when she needs to. But just a super, super replacement for Jo.
Who's looking over whose shoulder? Honest to God, she has stepped up in his doing it completely, completely. So I'm there for answering questions, but she's got it. Yeah, I'm looking over her shoulder. I actually have, I actually have to ask her to move away from the computer so I can get in there, so I can see, because I have my little magnifying glass at the computer screen, because I can't look over her shoulder and see well enough to see what she's doing.
So based on that high recommendation, I would like to appoint Megan Galbraith as our new full-time treasurer with the city of Perry. Looking for a motion from the council to approve that.
I move that we approve the mayor's appointment of Megan Galbraith as the new city treasurer.
Second.
Motion from Mike, seconded by Larry to approve the appointment of Megan Galbraith as the new city treasurer. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay?
We're gonna make this official.
Motion passes. Okay, Devon?
I'm right. Come on up, Megan. She goes, she goes square, yeah. We all get to square, yes, we don't get to throw things, but she gets square.
Here we go, this is it. Love you, Jo. Here we go.
I know.
Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
the Constitution of the state of Michigan
the Constitution of the state of Michigan
the charter and ordinances of the city of Perry
the charter and ordinances of the city of Perry
and that I will faithfully perform
and that I will faithfully perform
the duties as the city treasurer
the duty as the city treasurer
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability
so help me God.
Stay right there. Put your hair back.
Not to talk. Put your hair back.
Put your hair back up, act like you're smiling. Look at you, look at her.
We'll do it this way, have a look at her.
All righty.
You're not done yet.
I know you keep turning right in the face, but you're not done yet.
Is she bright? Is she bright? Oh my gosh.
Well, you know, I had to give her an invite to even come up here.
That's pretty funny.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sign hard, protest.
And we move into the future.
So now we're looking for possible approval to amend the motion that was made July fifteenth in regard to the new treasurer.
I move that we amend motion zero seven, one five, two one, zero five, cited below by removing upon ninety days
and replace
and replace it with as of November eighth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
It's been moved by Steve, seconded by Larry to amend said motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Moving on in our agenda, possible approval of audit proposal, which either Jo or Megan could answer questions about. We have a proposal from Clark, Schaefer, and Hackett. And we have, they've given us two options, to either just sign up with them for one year additional or for three years, which is less expensive. So the treasurers have recommended the three-year extension.
Just really quickly, these are the people that we have for our audits right now. And with Megan taking over, we recommended that it would be a more smoother transition because they know our books, they know our stuff, they know our bonds and everything to continue with the same company.
It was for a one-year agreement, thirteen thousand five hundred for 2022. But for a three-year agreement, it's twelve thousand five hundred for 2022, thirteen thousand even for 2023, and thirteen thousand five hundred for 2024. Any other questions?
Is there any reason we wouldn't want it for the full three years?
No, no, we are, we are very happy with them. They come in, and I want to say they're self-sufficient in that if they need to find invoices, they do invoices. If they need to make copies, they make copies. They normally schedule three or four people to come in for three days, four days, and I think this year, we had three people, and they were there for two days and got most everything that they needed. So, like I said, they don't leave everything in a big mess. You know, they're, they're pretty, pretty efficient.
I move that we accept the proposal from Clark, Schaefer, Hackett, and agree to a three-year extension of the services as presented by the treasurer.
Second. It's been moved by Larry, seconded by Mindy, to accept the proposal from Clark, Schaefer, Hackett, and agree to a three-year extension of services as presented by the treasurer. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now we're back to discussion of library building improvements. John?
So for one reason or another, over the course of the last year through 2020, I would get some of the budget stuff for this or proposals, and it just, we never got it to materialize, so. The discussions that I've had with Jamie have been, you know, and it's just, basically, I'm gonna talk about the exterior right now and our portion. I think that, I don't know if everybody has all of the proposals, but I did get three different ones from various contractors with as close to the same scope exterior, interior, as I could possibly do. Without paying someone, a design architect or something, to draw something up so everybody is... So I don't know exactly how you, how we want it to go, but we definitely need to do some of them with the library. As far as, we've, we've done part of it six, seven years ago. The shingles blew off, it got a new sign up there, and a new upper fascia in front. But the lower part that I'm talking about, however long it's been, I've seen some pictures from the nineteen eighties where it's, other than paint, it's the same. There was two doors at one time, so I'm not definite. That might have been around eighty-six. So I'm hoping that, I know it's, that it's not, that it's not rolled into the budget for the library, but we can amend it or do something. And I'm hoping that council will entertain that. It's just taken time. I believe that we should do it in conjunction with the interior, because if they tear out the windows, you know, we either work from the inside out or the outside in, you're still gonna have to fix the interior at one, at some point. So that's why I had the guys give proposals complete through when they did it. I think the October meeting, you might have gotten this proposal from Cody Construction. So everybody had seen it at some point, and the others, and if I'm not mistaken, I included in this packet a picture of some stonework that would be under the windows and come up to the bottom of the sill. And for all practical purposes, at this point in time, we're gonna look at some, like a siding, so if we, I told him, I said, I don't want wood, I don't want something that we have to worry about maintenance, so you know, I'm gonna say that it's gonna be a tannish-colored vinyl at this point in time. I don't know how, how you guys want to go about moving forward with this, but I think that it's a positive investment for the city.
I have a question.
Yes, Jo, which question?
If they do, if, if the same, the same contractor does the inside, and they start next spring, which is gonna be, what, April, May, possibly, May, June? Okay, so this, this amount, this expense, is it possible we can put that off till next budget? Because the next budget's gonna start June thirtieth. If he does the inside first and then does the outside, will that buy us enough time to get us into next year's budget?
I don't believe so, not, not in the timeframe to open in the spring.
Okay.
And I don't...
We want it done by the spring or done in the spring?
He says, my last correspondence with John on October twentieth is, as far as time right, timeframe to start, he could possibly start as early as January sometime.
Okay.
Sometime in January.
Okay, okay.
So it's gonna have to be coordination and when we can take the library out of service.
Yeah, we're gonna have to hire a moving company, specialize in libraries, move books. I mean, the furniture isn't even ordered, and who knows how long?
Right.
Special furniture, so.
We're, I guess we're kind of trying to get everything approved so that we can move forward and, you know, because he's gonna order windows, I think that I've discussed how kind of opening it up and squaring off, or making the windows rectangle instead of the, and so that's centering the door, getting that post out of the front, just bracing it up, filling in the door that she was concerned with. That'll all get filled in from the exterior with, with brick, kind of to match as close as we can for the, over on the fire department side, where it protrudes out, and so that's about what I have. I don't know if I need to add anymore, or I don't want to just keep rambling about it.
That's all right, let me, let me have you zip it, and we'll see if anybody has questions. And I'll kick it off, it's not really a question, but just comments in regard to where the money will come from. Because it is coming right up, we'll most likely have to, if we approve it, pay for it. But then I'm hoping, maybe against hope, but I'm hoping, we could get some grant money. We've got our new grant guide, and the wish list that we're putting together. We've got the county commissioners, who are sitting on a whole lot of money over there and don't know what to do with it, so. I mean, there are possibilities where we could maybe get some money back. So that being said, what other questions do we have or comments?
I have a question, John. I know at one time, we talked about some security around the back door. Is that being, I know it's not in this, but is that moving forward, or is that something we should consider along with all this other work?
Okay, we are working on getting cameras, our IT guy, because it has to be networked into our computers. So we just finished, we added four cameras to Coruna, which was desperately needed because of our after-school crowd. So his next focus is going to be Perry, and he'll be ordering cameras this week. So I'm hoping to have cameras within the next two or three weeks.
Okay, so there's a, there's a lot planned going on.
But then the whole rear is going to, the rear of the building will change, the hallway sightline and everything, which he might be able to speak more to, but that will, long-term goals, that will help that out. But yes, we're moving along with the cameras and the door ringer.
Thank you.
Yes.
So if anybody's been in there recently, the front door's gonna be moved over several feet. There's a doorway going through, and then you jog and go out the back door. So the library attendants and the, or whoever's working at the library is gonna be moved back in there. We've, I've proposed, and it's in the, in the, in the plan, to open that wall up and make it like a clear space, and you will have, when they're there, they'll have visual lines of both front and rear doors. And that's, that's where we're at, so there, it won't be necessary, it'll be a somewhat of a hallway, but it's gonna, you should, when they stand there, they'll be able to look at both doors. And then there won't be, people being able to get into back rooms or in the upstairs attic and hang out until after everybody leaves unaware. And so I think that it's a good thing. Some of the ceiling's gonna change heights and different things like that back in there, because it's two levels, not, not a huge amount, but it's probably six, eight inches of height difference from one, of height difference from one, one part to the other.
Other questions? Steve, did you have some?
No, let me answer my questions.
Okay. Mindy? You're good?
How do we do this?
That would be John's question, but how about you? Do you have anything?
Just going to say, do we need, are we counting on that grant money or any of the money from the pressures?
We're not absolutely counting on it. We just know that it's wafting out there in the breeze and maybe it'll blow our way, but who knows?
Probably should put this on the next agenda.
Okay. We will put it on our next agenda for a vote.
Is there anything you want from then for the next agenda would be my question. Are you happy with the materials you have or do you need more? Well, you got this number for sure, but we can give you Jamie's if they have questions. Is that okay, Jamie?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Keeping, keeping in mind that there'll be two things then. The work that the community library is going to do and pay for inside, we have to approve because we own the building even though they're paying for it. And then the other item is whether or not we are ready to pay for the exterior renovation.
So then for the next, maybe we can all study the budget and see what we.
Yes, I think we'll ask Megan, our new treasurer, to look at that budget and tell us, do we have some extra money to throw at that? If we get money back from a grant or something, then we can repay it. But if we don't, where can it come from? How will that happen?
Not to put more work on you, but could you write a letter to the county commissioners also?
I would write a letter.
Say that we'd like to amend our request for money and add that?
Yeah, I can, I, I look, but I almost think I had it.
I think it was in your earlier letter.
My first letter. Yeah, I can send them another letter though.
I have a question. Would letters of support towards your, with your letter to the county commissioner that we have so much of the public is backing this and has approved this and would like to move forward with this and then we present it to the county commissioners? Would that make a difference or no?
My honest opinion? No.
Okay.
There's, there really, I, I talked to our representative, John Plomin, maybe last week, just saying, where are you at? How are things coming? What are they talking about? Our request for money and so on. And honestly, his reply to me was, the commissioners are scared to make a decision. I said, well, that's not good. You know, they, they have all that money. If they don't utilize it, it's going to go back to the government, go back to the state or the federal.
Now they have to use it.
And nobody will get it. So they need to do something. So between letters and phone calls, I've been, I've been a pain, I guess, but a thorn in the side at the county commissioners. I am. I'll continue to be. Feel free to write letters though. City residents, if you want to write letters to the commissioners encouraging them to make decisions, I think that would be great. You know, if you want to steer them toward the needs here in the city of Perry, that's great too. Will it make a difference? Who knows? Maybe. That'd be nice. So that will go, both items will go on our agenda for next meeting. And this continues to be John with possible approval of chlorine system proposal for water treatment.
Okay. So this is the device in the water treatment plant that Joe says chlorine. It's been in service for around 12 years now and I'm purchasing this one as my backup in case I have any glitches, just so I have it on, on hand because the supply stream is and I can't get stuff as readily as in emergencies. So.
Good night, Jamie. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I was just advised that it'd probably be a good idea to go ahead and have this on the shelf, ready to go. It's just a matter of where I ended up and, so. Most of it I can do myself.
It's a plug and play.
Um, it's, it's got conduit on it, but yeah, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
I'm assuming this price is something you've got from various places.
Yeah, when I did it, J Mark said that the price is good through the end of the year. Shipping has went up a little, so I think I wrote in there not to exceed like $3,200. It was a $40 shipment and I think it went up. I keep getting surcharges on everything that we, we do for fuel. So I think that it'd probably be $50, $60 probably now to ship it.
What's the normal service life for one of them?
Well, they, most of them, they just run them probably 10 to 15 years. So I'm in that sweet spot where I don't want to be without it anyway.
And we have this money in your water budget?
Oh, yes. I have it in capital replacement to do this.
I move that we approve the call from Neymar Products LC to replace a water treatment plant and automatic chlorine injection flow proportioning system for an amount not to exceed $3,200.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve this purchase as read. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. John, you are next again.
So the next proposal is for sewer from Granite Interliner. These guys have been doing, they've done probably 1,500 feet of pipe for us so far in the city. And we line it, it gives it 80 to 100 years more life expectancy out of the, instead of digging up 20 feet, 15 feet in the ground, just to reline it. The ones that are in front of you are the ones that we've had not major issues with, but root infiltration. These guys will come in, clean it and then it'll get rid of the roots once they, there won't be any way for them to be infiltrating through the joints. And so they'll clean it, televise it, no any major issues. I mean, if it can't, then it'll be, there'll be a portion in here that it has for the part of the cleaning. So that'll be in there and they, they clean it with their router and inspect it prior to putting in the pipe liner. I have this in capital outlay. I did some last year and I'm just kind of on a schedule to fix places that we have more problems than we should and to try to avoid those and extend life of the gravity sewer mains.
How much more work will we need to do after this is done? Do we still have more to address?
Yeah, I'll probably just keep going.
Okay.
We, there, I've tried to find out if I could get any grants to do, there was what they called the SAW grants and they were for sewer. They would come in, clean, televise and GIS if you're all in your underground sewer. We, we did not, we, we had too much expenses in sewer at the time with the lagoon relining project and there was some extra strings attached that if they found deficiencies too much, you had to have a plan to come up to pay for that. And I don't know, I wasn't in charge then. We were just kind of worried that we might not be able to sustain some of that. It would, you know, it was like 10 cents on the dollar, city's cost.
So even doing this, I should include this on our wish list to our grant writer for future needs?
Yeah, I'll probably, I might change things up and we might have to just go through, clean and televise stuff. I, we don't have a camera. We can clean stuff, but we don't have quite the equipment that they have. They can send their, their equipment down with the jetter as they're doing it and watch what they're doing. We, we just do it blindly.
We couldn't just get a little tiny chihuahua dog and put a camera in and send it to the room? That wouldn't work.
We tried it with it. It didn't work. I'm just kidding. So I think it's a benefit to the system. I mean, it's expensive to do, but it's not as expensive as digging it up and tearing up the road and, you know, there, there will be places where we'll probably replace everything when we go through and do water mains, but these, most of these places have had water mains done, so there, there's not going to be a need to replace old cast iron in most of the sections.
Okay. What do you think, council? Any more questions for John regarding that?
I move that we accept the proposal by Granite Inliner for an amount not to exceed $57,147 for sanitary sewer rehabilitation. Second.
Motion from Larry, seconded by Mike as he read. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
We'll have lots of opportunities for our grant writer.
Yes, we will. The list is going to be longer and longer. Moving on, possible authorization to mayor to pay bills. That does not mean that I'm going to pay the bills on my checking account because it kind of looks like that. That's not what that means.
She is getting the drinks now because.
If we all drink vodka, but that's it.
I am.
We asked our city attorney, what happens if we don't have a quorum? It's the first meeting of the month and we have all these bills. That's when the majority of our bills need to get paid. What can we do? Or let's say last minute, there's a nice storm and we just can't all get here. What do we need to do? And this was his suggestion. The resolution that you have in your packet, and if you haven't read through it, we'll give you a minute to do that and see what discussion you might have in regard to that recommendation.
This is really an extension discussion we've had a couple of meetings bad, I recall.
Yes, exactly.
Pretty reasonable.
Any discussion, anything else anybody wants to bring up in regard to that? If not, I look for a resolution from council.
I move that we accept and approve the following resolution. Whereas the city, whereas the Perry City Council has previously canceled city council meetings due to lack of business to be discussed and for various other reasons, whether lack of quorum, et cetera, and whereas during the timeframe when these meetings have been canceled, there have been bills due and owing from the city to certain service providers and/or result of materials purchased. Now therefore it is resolved that in order to prevent any penalty from being applied or any delay in service to be received, the city mayor shall be and is hereby authorized to approve payment for any due and owing invoice received by the city of Perry for debts incurred in the regular course of city Perry business and when city county, city council meetings are canceled during a timeframe when the bills would be due.
Second.
We have a motion by Mike, seconded by Steve as read in regard to the mayor having permission to pay bills when necessary. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
I only say that because I watched this go really bad in the past. And so I appreciate you guys considering this because all of our mayors have always looked out for the best of the city and never meant any harm.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, talking about possible approval of grant writing expenditures. Now at our last meeting, we approved hiring a grant writer. The next day, he sent us information about a grant that could possibly bring us an additional $70,000 toward our total cost on our water tower. Now, he's not saying absolutely because the way it lists what things are covered and so on, though it does say water distribution in there. It has to be tied to agriculture. And anyway, we discussed it, we looked it over and, or development, development of additional homes because housing is such a need in this area right now. I said, well, truly, if our water tower isn't working right, we can't bring in additional homes. So I, I think, I think we can tie it in there. He said, I, I think you're right. So that was kind of how the discussion kept going. So he said, well, the thing is, this has to be submitted by November 18th. He said, we can get right on it though, if your council approves the additional hours for us to do that. So that's where this proposal came from. We would write the grant for $100,000. It's a 70-30 grant, but truly, if we got this grant and we have all of our ARPA money going toward the water tower project too, if we got that, we as a city could end up only having to spend $30,000 on that project. If, if we don't get that grant though, Megan, in her free time, has found by scouring through the water fund, some extra money.
I don't know if I call it extra money, but.
Okay. Well, I'll let you say what it is.
Well, we maybe not need to go out for a loan. We may be able to fund the project through fund balances is what I'm looking into right now because the whole project is already in this year's budget. We budgeted the full 350. So I need to do some more digging, make sure I understand the history of the fund balances, but it looks like the fund balance should support the expense, knowing that we'll get another $100,000 to put back in the fund balance next October in the second half of the ARPA bonds.
And if this grant that we're talking about, that grantsmanship would write for us, if that is funded, it gets funded in 2022. It's like April or something. I mean, it's soon, May, thank you. So it would be something perhaps we'd have to expend, but perhaps get back. So I know that's a lot of perhapses and mites and mays, but I guess the only way to find out is to have him write it. But what are your thoughts?
He thinks he can meet the deadline date if we give him approval. I mean, we're gambling $1,100 for $70,000.
Right, right. He didn't have any inkling. Did you get any from him, Devin, when we talked to him, that he couldn't get it written by the 18th? I didn't get any impression from him. I mean, he was very confident that he could get it turned in by then, with of course, help from us, John and from Megan, getting him the information he needs, but he didn't seem to have any doubt that he could get it in by then.
That wasn't, yeah, that wasn't even just, um, discussion. No hesitation whatsoever.
It's the first time he's done it too. He probably want to nail it, you know?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And I think he said in the proposal that if, if in fact the hours, if he exceeds the hours, he's going to cap it at that and complete the project.
Yes, that's exactly right. So he's, he's wanting to please us, which is nice. It's good service and, you know, he's reaching out for a first time, only having been truly employed for two weeks by us anyway. What do you think?
I move that we authorize up to a maximum of 15 additional hours for an amount not to exceed $1,125 to be paid by Grantsmanship Consulting LLC, which will authorize Grantsmanship Consulting to write a grant for $100,000 toward water tour, tower maintenance cost and authorize the mayor to sign any and all documents to complete the agreement.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Mindy as he read regarding the grant that we discussed. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next on our agenda is possible renewal of liability and property insurance, also known as MML. Devin, you want to lead that?
I gave you everything. Do you have any questions?
We've been working with them and pleased with them over the past years. No, I don't have any question.
And I don't know if you've noticed that I kind of keep a tally on the cost and to me, they, overall, there really isn't a lot of change.
Pretty minimal in terms of year-to-year change, as I recall.
Yep, and when I, probably three years ago, I was talking to the Michigan Township Association, which is the same as MML, but is for the township. And he had said that other than some up and downs, he said that they would probably be quite similar in price. It would just be the object if you want to work with us over them type of deal. So unfortunately, he was too honest that I said, "Okay, thank you, I'll stay where I'm at."
I move that we approve payment of city insurance renewal to Michigan Municipal League Liability and Property Pool in an amount not to exceed $38,685 and authorize the clerk to sign the agreement. All those in favor of that, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, on to the fun stuff. Christmas lighting contest. We need to put together some details, like date, who's going to judge, what will the prizes be, will they stay the same or not?
What did we do last year? Do you recall, Larry?
Pardon?
Do you recall the date we did last year? Was it the first week of December or the second?
Yep, I picked a date that I proposed and we can adjust it from there. I would consider that we might want to do the actual judging on the evening of Tuesday, December 7th. That would be just a few days ahead of Christmas fantasy.
Yep.
And by then, almost everybody's going to have, you know, lights out.
What day, Georgia?
Pardon?
What day was that again?
December 7th.
Tuesday, December 7th.
Did you say a time?
I think in the past, we've done like 7 o'clock.
Only because we'll reach out to the previous winners to see if they want to participate. So if you want to commit, then I can tell them.
I think 7 o'clock seems reasonable. Most people are going to be home and it's dark enough.
Yeah, they got dinner done and so forth.
Exactly.
I'm not available that day, but if it's a different day, I'll...
Are you going to be the leader of the pack, maybe you do?
I can if that's what the council would like.
It's kind of an open, kind of a social thing, so you can, anybody's invited.
Basically, we've done in the past, we participated, Linda and I participated on it as winners in the past and I had no problem in spearheading it, opening it up to all council people and we tried to get all of the past winners and runner-up to participate in the judging.
My husband and I were involved last year and we were happy to be involved. We had a great time and it was just great making specific time, setting it aside to drive around and see everybody's Christmas decorations. I won't be able to do it this year though because Tuesday nights, I just can't do that.
I mean, we can make another date.
No, it's okay. I don't need to do it every year. I don't. We have a lady who has contacted Dory, a Red City resident, Deborah Graves, who has volunteered to judge. So I think we should take her up on that.
Oh, absolutely.
And usually, Dory and I, we reach out for you and then we'll give you a copy in the previous year so you know who won and let you do your thing. That's what we usually do. I have to admit, I caught another whoops. So in the Christmas lighting contest, usually the council will make a motion to approve that there'll be three winners and $200 will be distributed amongst them if you would want to throw your own motion in. I did give you that one today.
I will take a shot, Evan.
Okay.
I move that we set the annual Christmas lighting contest for the city of Perry for December 7th, commencing at 7:00 PM. And the judging will be done by any city council members that are available, as well as the past winners and runner-up. That we would allocate a fund of $200, with $100 going to first place and $50 each to second and third place runner-ups as prize money. Second.
Okay, so we have a motion from Larry and seconded by Mike. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Good job, Larry.
Thank you.
On to the possible adoption of ordinance amendment number 357 that was read at our last meeting. Any comments about that or questions? Looking for this motion then?
I move that the ordinance amendment number 357 regarding ordinance enforcement, which was read at the October 21st council meeting, be adopted.
Second.
Motion from Mike and seconded by Steve to adopt that ordinance. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. The next one is possible adoption of ordinance amendment number 358, updates to general offensive codes.
I move that ordinance amendment number 358 regarding updates to general offense codes, and which was read at the October 21st council meeting, be adopted.
Second.
It's been moved by Steve and seconded by Larry to approve that amendment number 358. As he read, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Possible adoption of ordinance amendment number 359, authorized officials and penalties.
I move that the ordinance amendment number 359 regarding updates to authorized officials and penalties, and which was read at the October 21st council meeting, be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Mindy, second from Larry, regarding approving amendment number 359. Those in favor of that motion, as read, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Any other business that may come before council this evening?
I have one thing just...
Yes, John?
Public Works is intending to get the lights up and have them ready to light the street poles downtown on November 24th. I've done this in the past. We're not going to light the tree until the lighting ceremony unless you guys want to do something different. That was, I just wanted to let you know what the intentions were, if there was any recommendations, objections or...
I have no objection. I think it's great to get it lit up and I think it encourages people to come downtown to shop and do that, but yeah, we'll hold off on the tree until the Christmas fantasy kick on.
It's going to be in conjunction with the fireworks.
The fireworks, correct, yeah.
Thank you, John.
And Santa arriving and hopefully the fireworks don't scare the horses and so all that.
Be interesting.
Yes, it would. And do we have any public comment? No one? Okay. Council discussions and observations? Items for our next agenda. We have the library improvements, approving the interior work by CDL and possibly approving the exterior work that the city would pay for. I will get a letter out to the commissioners or try to have discussion that I can report back next time. No, no, no? Okay, then.
Do we have any follow-up on the list of things we're asked the grant writer to dig into, corporate information or discussion?
I have gotten input from, from John, from you. I don't think I've gotten input from anybody else. So if anybody else has items they want me to put on the wish list for the grant writer, please email them to me. That's the best way because then I can just squish them all together. Okey-dokey. Okay. Anything else? Okay. 8:17, our meeting is adjourned.